Okay, I'd like to call the meeting ordered for November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We're gonna start with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go into a public hearing on the facility assessment, old fire station. So, um, I guess what we've done here is we've asked to have this public, public hearing there. Um, trying to get the, some ideas from the public on what we, uh, what we wanna do with the old fire station out front here. And, um, didn't know if anybody had any, uh, any suggestions or ideas.
I have the two emails we can start off with, if you'd like.
Yeah, we can do that.
First one is from Valerie Doyle. If it is determined that the former fitness building can be converted to a safe space allowing for the library to expand its community outreach and book collection, I would support that. The library is a very warm resource to our town. The second is from Joyce Bashki. Please accept this as my personal opinion regarding the use of the old gym. Considering the building is approximately sixty years old and the condition is questionable at best, as well as the history of the mold growth and drainage issue referred to the town assessment prepared document, I believe that other than complete demolition of the building accompanied with the establishment of a building committee led by the select board with a precise plan for an improved municipal building fitting the needs of the community, whatever those may be, to keep the building standing just for the sake makes no sense. Without use, a concrete building would simply continue to decay. I believe we should take positive action and hopefully this can be the first step in moving forward. Another consideration might be to, due to issues with the parking lot or rather lack thereof, the grade that make, keeps, the grade that makes getting in and out of cars somewhat difficult, a redesign of the entire lot, including the gym space, might be the best use of the space for the community. Thank you for your interest.
Just, those the only two we have?
Yes.
Okay. Have you guys got any thoughts? Dan?
I mean, I think that was the idea of a public hearing, to hear what people have. Um, I think we talked about the last being of his pros and cons. I mean, one thing with the mold issue, if we decide to reuse the building, what are we, that grade? How are we gonna solve that problem? But I could also see if it is usable, which we saw in the report, but there were some suggestions that it could be used for a space like I know, I've seen out there on social media, like the library being utilized in that space. But I really like to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah, I was hoping we'd get some input, somebody in the public here. There we go.
Yep. I pretty much agree with Joyce. Uh, I think we should demolish the building, use the space for parking or whatever, and face the fact that Acton's not going to stop growing. The municipal offices are going to have to be revamped, expanded. The bathrooms are a disaster, the way that it's set up with a little warrant of offices that are not accessible to the public. I think it's not very good. It's, it's just a wonderful space for future use, possibly including some kind of a community gathering hall or something like that, because this kitchen is still quite inadequate for public events. But there's a variety of things that you could do with more space. It's, you know, nobody wants to spend more money, but you bite the bullet like we did with, when we put on the, um, school, which is the addition that is bigger than any, the original school. And it can be done.
Good evening, Mary Stanton. I think a lot of people thought that building would have been demolished already from years ago. Do you remember anything, Dave? Cause I could have sworn you were gonna be the one who could demolish it, cause you had the machinery, but.
I, I offered a couple of times, you know, but.
Anyway, um, I'm curious as to what we're doing with the EMS building over by the fire, the big, across the street fire department. Is anyone using that building? It's being used?
So there's fitness equipment in there, what was left over from the grant is there so the fire staff can utilize it. There's a meeting room in there and there's also a small area that the sheriff's department uses as a central, um, space.
I just, I feel like I never see anybody over there. Yeah, so I would say demolish that building, definitely. I mean, isn't there mold in there and stuff? Let's get rid of it.
Any other comment? There we go.
Hello. So, um, in analyzing this, I was trying to figure out how much of the, how much is it just to put a library out there versus putting toilets in here versus fire suppression system? And I think it's hard to decide without having a concrete budget and a number. As best I could tell, it was gonna exceed like eight hundred thousand dollars to put that library there. So I don't think that's a good, uh, use of town funds. But again, I don't have a breakdown of what it means to move the library because the numbers are all together. Is there a breakdown for that?
When I, when I looked at that breakdown, it was, it was kinda confusing. It's like, how does somebody give a breakdown unless they know exactly what they're actually gonna do?
Right.
You start giving prices like that, you're just throwing numbers and sticking them to the wall. I, I would think it'd be ill-advised, uh, for a company to do that, to start throwing numbers like that. Because, you know, if I was an engineer and I was coming in and I know the selectmen didn't want that building anymore, I would throw stupid numbers like that out because that would scare everybody in the community. Like, I'm not gonna put eight hundred thousand dollars into a brick building. Nobody in their right mind would do that, cause you could tear it down and build quite a building for eight hundred thousand dollars, brand new.
Right.
So even, even these days you can, so.
The other thing is who, you know, had the input on what their recommendations were? Because depending on who they talked to, it's like, oh, yeah, we need an employee bathroom. We need a full, you know, size kitchen for a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, what's, you know, what's driving some of this recommendation that they came up with? Was that something that the town has been looking at for years? Or is that just ideas that are thrown out there? And why, why do we want a commercial kitchen?
Yeah, to answer that, they did meet with all of the department heads. I mean, town hall, library, fire department, some of the selectmen. It wasn't one or two people. It was, you know, community-wide, he gathered information.
You know, a department head does what a department head's supposed to do.
Right.
Every department head, their job is to.
Rally for their department.
Yeah, they want, they want more stuff, you know, the fire department wants brand-new fire trucks. You know, transfer station wants some new parking lots. It's, that's the whole idea is to get more and then, you know, um, but that's why we're here. I mean, um, you know, we're trying to come up with an idea. I've got some ideas, but I'm gonna let everybody do theirs first.
Okay. Well, I was just, again, trying to figure out what the numbers were when you tried to start separating how, what it takes to move the library versus putting a commercial kitchen in, so that was all, but.
And I think one of the reasons, like, is we all, I think, have an idea, but we wanted to know a starting point. Like, we wanted to get the public feedback. Like, are we gonna look into renovating it if that's what you folks wanted? But if you folks don't want that, I mean, so far my, what I'm getting is more people seem to be afraid of demolishing it, then that's where we're gonna start putting into how much is it gonna cost? But we don't wanna spend all that legwork to look into something that the town decides, why are you even doing that? So I think that's why we had, we're having this. We can kinda get that feedback to say, okay, this is the direction we should start looking into those numbers and budget.
I appreciate that.
And there are estimates, but on page six, there is somewhat of a breakdown of column by column of how they've come up with those numbers. They're estimates, but it's something.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that. Yeah, I didn't see that.
There's multiple, multiple things that, that Spock can be used for. It's just whether or not it's feasible.
Can you build onto this building? Can you add an annex or something?
Yeah.
Can't do anything.
So, yeah, I mean, that's a thought. All right, well, thank you.
Bernard?
Hi there. I, I feel like this decision, like a number of decisions, is premature in that I think the starting point is updating our comprehensive plan for the town of Acton. We really don't know, I mean, we, we hear people say new municipal center, recreation, whatever it is, but that's just their opinion. And I'm not saying I disagree with those things, but I'm saying they're not necessarily representative of what we might find out in a comprehensive plan or even some long-range planning for the town. And I know, um, I'm, I'm not calling you out on this, David. I'm just saying, I know, like David has said, use the adage of putting lipstick on a pig. And, and the, the building is a pig, I agree. But, you know, if we slaughter the pig and then we find out we still need to eat, then it's gonna cost us a lot of money potentially. I don't know, and I'm not sure if anybody knows, whether it's gonna cost more to rehab that building than it would to construct one of similar size, for example. And so I would rather be relying more on actual numbers and facts and less on opinions in, in making a decision. Now, again, the building is a pig, it's an eyesore. I agree with that. But the roof doesn't look to be particularly old. I don't think, if, if the big issue is it's an eyesore, which I agree, I don't think it would cost much to correct that even without knowing what we're gonna use it for. To paint the building, to build up some planters around the building and put some shrubs in and flowers, it could look quite nice. And so, again, if the issue is it's an eyesore, that can be fixed. And then you still have the building if a potential use is identified. You haven't demolished it and then have to rebuild. So I'd like to see us start with some estimates to remediate the mold, for example, before we simply go to tearing it down. I do think there are some potential good uses, such as a community center, if we added restrooms in a kitchen or an exercise area again, um, a resource center. Even, you know, this again goes back to my comments about a comprehensive plan or long-range plans. I've heard discussion with the select board and citizens about should Acton have its own police force? Well, if we decide to go that way, maybe that building could be used for that, rather than having torn it down and then say, oh, now we need to build a police station. I've heard people say that they would prefer that we have, um, a public works department rather than road commissioners. If the town were to go that way, might be nice to have a building to store some equipment in, rather than.
They got their complex already.
Well, I'm just.
I understand.
Giving my opinion. Could be used just for storage even, um, if we take care of the eyesore aspect of it. Specific to the idea of a library, I, I have to say that at least right now, I would be opposed to that. And the reason is this. I find it disappointing that the libraries no, no longer open Saturdays because the town hall isn't open. That it's a staffing issue. We can't have the library open if we only have one staff member there. So if we then move the library into that building, does that mean we're gonna have to hire another full-time person so that there are two staff people in the building? I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something we should know before we decide to do that. So, um, that's, that's where I'm at with it. I think we need more information to make a good, sound decision on it. Thanks.
Scott Stanton. So, that building is a complete disaster and there's nothing you could do to convince me that we should be spending money on that building. And when you look at it from the aspect of it being an eyesore, it's not just the building itself, but it's the whole location of that building. That building completely covers the whole town hall property and you can't see any of the buildings for the town hall. So the fact that it's a junk building and it's really in a bad place, it should be torn down. And we should, for now, as a temporary measure, expand the parking situation to make the parking a lot better in the town hall. And then we can talk about capital improvement plan as we go down the road, but it's not something we have to deal with right now. But that building's been sitting there for a long time now and it hasn't been dealt with. We should get rid of it.
Elise Miller, director of the library. I agree that the building needs to be taken down. I do agree that we do need more parking. I don't know if it's, could, the footprint of that building could be moved closer to the road to expand parking between the two buildings. I do know the library is also outgrowing its space. We have story hour with twenty-two people in there and patrons coming in, walking over kids. I have parents that come in and have to sit on the floor because there's no place to read a story to their child when they're here. So, yeah, we are outgrowing the space. It would be nice to have that shared space with the community, um, as well as the recreation department, having a separate room that could be accessed by the recreation department, but also locked off from the library part, portion of it. We are also at a point where we just can't fit as many books in that library that the patrons would like to be reading. So we're constantly forcing the books out the door, bringing the new ones. So we, we would like a larger space as well as the town hall is outgrowing this building. But, yeah, it, it, the building is old and moldy. I've been in there, I don't know if you can eradicate that or not by power washing walls. It's crumbling. I've been in there as a gym, you can see daylight through the wall at times, um, or in spaces.
How many times did that floor flood out when you were, you were select, a couple of times, right?
Couple of times, we had the gutter put up on the back and that helped quite a bit, but.
And we replaced the roof.
Yeah, roof to floor.
Sealed around the outside on the bottom.
Well, you took the floor out, you never re- replaced the floor, you just kinda took that floor out. As far as parking goes, I just wanna mention a story. When I was on the comprehensive plan implementation committee years ago, that's a mouthful. The parking issue is, is bad. He, he, one of the guys on the committee slipped right out, cause the, the slopes of the different levels of the parking lot and really banged his head open. So, yeah, the parking lot does need to be dealt with. And I think moving the, the footprint of the building closer to the road and, and flattening that parking area would allow parking between that new building and this building. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of years ago, we appropriated money for this project. Can you tell me how the article read, please? Exactly what the money was appropriated for at the time?
I can't read it, but I, the article was for the parking lot slash.
Yeah, I'll have to find it.
Complex, it was for the complex anyways, for the engineering and all that, so. We can't do anything with the parking lot until we know what we're gonna do with that. You know, cause the whole idea was, you know, when we have the eng, we, cause we're gonna have engineers engineer the parking lot. We get, so we can make sure everything's ADA to maximize our area. That's kinda why we're here tonight. We, we wanna know, is this something, are we gonna try to rehabilitate?
Is that building gonna be there or not?
Exactly, cause if it's not, because I know if it was gone, it would, it would be definitely a lot easier to make this, this parking lot compliant, ADA compliant. And especially right over here where the library is, there's a big drop-off there, you know? I mean, really, at the end of the day, we should have railing, we should have some sort of guardrail there or something, you know? But to make this parking lot correct, we have to have room to do it. Cause you have those slopes. You know, to get your quarter inch per foot, your two percent slopes and all that, you can't get it when you have something obstructing the, in the way.
Right. No, I just wondered if the money was specifically appropriated for the demolishing of the building.
This is how it reads, I found it.
You did find it, good, thank you.
Steve, the town will vote to establish pursuant to thirty A MSRA section five eight oh one A capital improvement reserve fund for town hall parking lot reconstruction and to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand for the same.
So.
Town hall reconstruction.
Parking lot.
I mean, uh.
Town hall parking lot reconstruction.
We didn't put it in the article that we're tearing it down because we didn't know if we were gonna tear it down, but we put the money in there so that we could tear it down to make the parking lot. So in theory, if you tear it down, you make a new parking lot. So, um, I mean, my thoughts on this whole, whole thing, you know, I've, I've dealt with that back in the day when it was flooding out, I had my guys go dig out back, they put some drainage around it. You know, we had the gym in there, that didn't work, you know, it just didn't, didn't sustain itself. You know, I listened to Elise, I, I agree that we could do something with, uh, some sort of a multi-building, one for rec, one for library, uh, that's something we, we could ponder. But at the, or even I, even I had come up with some ideas that, you know, our septic system over here at probably is fifty years old, you know, could be forty anyways, years old. You know, you could, you could put a new septic system out in the parking lot, pave it and there you go. You know, kill two birds with one stone. You know, there's, there's multiple things you can do. Obviously do that, you're not putting another building there. But, um, I honestly, at the end of the day, I honestly think that the town of Acton's better than rehabbing that building. Okay? Where, you know, other towns build brand-new buildings, not saying we have to keep up with the Joneses, but we're not a poor town. And to go put some, I think, what Bernard said, with some lipstick on that thing. You know, really, at the end of the day, you've got a block building, you never, ever meet your heating codes and all that stuff there that, you know, they're requiring now. It just doesn't make any sense to me. But that's why we're here. We, we just gotta figure out what we're gonna do to, uh, right now, the consensus I'm getting out of it is the building, you know, is an eyesore.
Take it down, yeah. My, uh, you know, I made a couple of just quick notes, thinking about the building. So if, if you were thinking about rehabbing the building, you've got a cement block building. Basically, you have no foundation under the building, it's built on a slab. There's no insulation, which means you'd have to build an interior wall to put insulation in. There's no heat in the building. It has one large monitor, oil-fired furnace that hangs from the ceiling, a hot air furnace. So you'd have to put in appropriate heat. It's not handicap accessible, so you'd have to do that. We know we have a water issue around the building. We know the outside doesn't look good, so now you gotta vinyl side it. So you've already built interior walls, you've already insulated it, you've already put a heating system in it, you've already, um, put siding on it. Let's just take it down and build new. You know, it doesn't make sense to put anything. All you have is a ske, you don't even have a skeleton and skeleton of a building there. You've got a great roof.
It's a shell.
But that's it, yeah, it's barely a shell. The building was built as a garage. It was built to store fire trucks. It wasn't even built with the understanding that you're gonna hold, uh, fire department meetings in it, you know, so. And there's one bathroom that's barely adequate, there's no showers, there's no, there's a lot, there's a lot of no's to it. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of tearing it down. The first problem we had with that building many years ago was our insurance company looked at it and said, you have an issue with the foundation around the front of it. The, uh, the sand, it's settling. Hasn't settled enough to really show a difference in the building, but the sand around it is starting to go down in and, and starting to settle, so. There's, I don't know, there's too many problems with it to try to, to try to make a new, you know, make a building out of it, a usable building. So I do ha, you know, fully agree that the best, the best way to spend our dollar is to take it down, use it as parking, look at the whole complex maybe as far as, um, I don't know if it's a good way of adding on to this place to make it aesthetically, keep the his, keep the historical look it has and still aesthetically make it look good. I do agree, it'd be great to have a new library. If there's some way that can get incorporated into it. I know there's some grants out there, there's gotta be. Sanford just got a huge grant to redo their library. So there's gotta be something out there for that. We have some other land around, I don't know if we'd wanna put it somewhere else, but right here is a great place for it. This is the best spot for it, you know, for the library, so. And I do agree, we could use a new one, use it, you know, a new innovative library where you have more computer space, you have better, uh, like she says, storytime areas and, and all that. That, to me, has been one of the best ideas that's come down the, the thought process here is trying to do something with the library out of everything we need. And if the library went into a new building, that building is still usable for something here, for something with the town hall. So for office space and whatnot, so. But bottom line, um, I'd be, I wouldn't even call the building a pig to put a lipstick on it. It's not even that good. So, and I don't believe it was built in nineteen sixty. That's what the report said. Dennis, do you happen to know, was it early, early to mid seventies?
When they moved all the fire trucks?
When that building was built? Cause prior to that, it was Paul Garrish's barn, correct?
Yeah, they had, they kept one there and they kept one up at Ingrid's.
Yeah, so. This might do sense worth.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm CJ Gardner. I thought that the, in the report, it said that the library building was built in like nineteen fifty-nine.
Eighteen hundred and seven.
Okay, yeah, cause that's what everything I looked for said. So I just wanted to clarify that the library building was the Acton Corner Schoolhouse and it was built in, according to Dick Neal's book, eighteen eighty-six.
Yeah, I think, I think the fire station building was in the early, early to mid eighty, uh, seventies. Cause prior to nineteen seventy, we didn't even have fire department, an organized fire department. Nineteen eighty, we had, got an ambulance service, so.
Hi, I'm Jim McGuire. I just listened to a lot of what you said and, and agree with a lot of that. I've been in the library and I think it is very small and crowded and, um, could use a new facility. I did read the report and it's, in the report, it seemed to indicate that trying to make more space for the municipal building would involve taking over the current library and using that for making more space. And if that happened and if this fire station building came down, I think you could probably build a building smaller than the current fire station, but it would still be bigger than the current library. And it could be modern and have more space and have a bathroom in it. I understand part of the reason that the library can't open sometimes is because there's not a bathroom in the library and, and the town hall has to be open. So that type of a proposal seems reasonable to me is to utilize the current library space for expanding the municipal space and looking into a new building for the library.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Richard Nass, Milton Mills Road. So I joined the fire department in nineteen seventy-four and the building was there, but it hadn't been there for very long and there was so.
Hadn't been there for very long?
No.
Okay.
But I don't know when it was built. But there is another, we had, uh, I was participating in two other significant building projects, the two school projects. And I just wanted to bring up one thing, cause I'm in favor of taking this fire station down, definitely. And then continue the discussion about what you wanna do, other than making parking there. Beyond that, other buildings, I think the discussion, you know, needs to go beyond getting this building down. But the four-room schoolhouse, uh, existed and there was a shed. I, I think that would be described as a shed that was part of it. And toward the end of, and we financed that project completely, there was no state money in the first edition. The second edition, the state participated in, but not the first. And so, uh, the shed became an issue toward the end, uh, because it looked like it should have been removed. But we were of the, of the notion at that point that if it was useful for anything, why would you take it down? So I just, you're gonna encounter that sooner or later, probably, when the idea of taking this old fire department down. And I would urge you to, to discount that or not listen to it, because the building needs to come down. In the end, the shed was, uh, was enhanced, it's now a storage building, it still exists at the school. And, uh, but the dilemma was, uh, kinda old-school, I guess. It was, should we take something down that's maybe useful? And you've heard a little bit of that tonight, you know, if we can make something else out of it. But I think, and I agree with most people's comments today, it needs to come down and we should do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just see too many negatives to try to, try to do something with it.
I live in a house that was built in eighteen fifty. And if my father wasn't born, I would've ripped that thing down. How much it costs to build, work on an old house, I ripped that sucker down. So, but, um, unfortunately I can't, so. But no, I appreciate everybody's, um.
I have a comment.
Oh.
I have a comment. Sorry.
Joan Nass, my roommate. I have a vision of taking that horrible-looking building down and making, keeping the wonderful flavor of Acton and using funds that we would've used other ways and extending, putting an addition on. In Lebanon, they added a library to the school. It was the town library that was demolished in that old town hall on the corner. And now it's this beautiful library added on to the school. And it's a public library, but it was added there. I could envision a library going over where the driveway is and we could have a nice-looking town hall. We all love this town, but it would not be nice to keep the character here. It's my thought.
Yeah, I can, I can see some sort of a semi-wide addition going that way. Two-story, so you've got this level and, and the bottom level. Either one could be a library, you could do, you know, new plumbing, new, you know, set it up properly, maybe even a handicap elevator, I don't know. Just, you know, you might even be able to incorporate it into being like a main entrance to where you enter, you'd have the library section there. Yeah, it's, it's a good idea. Yeah, we're on the same track.
It, it seems like, keep in check, most people, I think we had two in favor of rehabilitating, but everyone else seems to be in favor of demolishing.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think the comments have been great, I'm sorry, Dan, do you have anything else? I think the comments have been great, uh, for me, it's provided me the feedback that I was looking for. I think there's probably not much question the building ought to be torn down. I think, um, what to do with it, what to do with the space, and how do we approach this parking lot? There've been such, some suggestions about a library, uh, community space. Once that space is freed up, well, I think we ought to figure out what the, the potential development of this site ought to look like before we start paving, putting in retaining walls and other infrastructure that may in fact impede what we'd wanna do at some point in the future. And so I think there ought to be some kind of design done that would look forward some number of years, and a designer could help you figure that out, let's say ten years. What do you really need here, ten years from now? Do you need a new library? Do you need community space? Do you need a bigger meeting room? Does the town administrative offices need more space? At the moment, other than the library, and I listened to the folks in the library and I believe their assessment, personally, I'm not sure the town needs more space right now for administrative offices. I haven't spoke with Jennifer about it, she probably would disagree with me, but, um, I think at some point in the future, we will. And so we ought to understand, as we're gonna develop this complex, how we're gonna do it and how that space would be utilized. And then I think that would lay out for us, what are we gonna do today with the parking lot? And how are we gonna design that? And put, as we're putting in, I think it needs retaining walls, I think there's, there's probably a lot that's got, it's not just a paving job, we're gonna have to deal with that poor grade there. I think we need to figure out what that's gonna look like in the future in order to figure out what to do with that. The other thing is, somebody's gotta pay for all of this. It, the, tearing it down is not a lot of money. I'm sure we can, we can get that done at a relatively, you know, that's not my issue. It's, when you think about everything else people are talking about, there are potentially other needs within the town. We're doing a road assessment. I, I would love to see what the, uh, a reasonable funding plan for the maintenance of our roads would look like. I suspect it may be more than what we're putting currently into roads, but I think we need to see that. The fire department is talking about some additional equipment at some point in the future. We need to lay that all out and understand what we need for finances over a longer period to make sure that we don't start spending today, in one way, money that we may need for some other purpose in the future. So, it, we need a, a longer-term capital plan for the town that will bring together roads, issues for the library, community center. I'm not aware of anything in the school, but that would be our obligation as well. We just ought to lay out all these assets and know what kind of funding we're gonna need going forward over a period of time to make sure that we understand what impact it's gonna have on the tax rates. Because that, quite frankly, is what will be important to a lot of people, as it should be, cause this is all gonna have to be paid for. So, I'm in favor of tearing it down, not quite sure what to do with it yet. Personally, I would bring someone in and help us figure out, given the land that we've got and given the uses that we think we might have, how should that be located on this space? And then from that, I think we could perhaps figure out how to approach this parking lot issue. But that's, that would be my take.
Honestly, at the end of the day, what we should do is have the engineer lay out the parking lot. Say, they can look at it and say, "Okay, the building's not there, how do we make this parking lot work?" After the parking lot's in, then you can, you know, when the engineer, then you can put a little spa right here, proposed library, whatever, you know, whatever, future library, that spa would be accessed for that. You can do that, but with, with knowing what we're gonna do with the building, we, we're not making a decision tonight. This is obviously, you know, but, but say, say we did. Say we say, "Okay, we, we're gonna make a decision, it's gone, we're gonna flatten it, it's gonna be temporary parking for now," and then the engineers, before we take it out, I think we really ought to have the engineers come in and, and design it. Because then we don't have to do things twice.
I thi- I think designing the lot ahead of knowing what we wanna do with the space is backwards. I think we ought to know, over the long term, let's say ten years, what kind of development do we think we wanna see on that space? And then where should that be located? And then with that, you think, you can then fit in the issue of where should the parking be? And I think that will perhaps lead to a different result than simply having someone come in, an engineer, and say, "I wanna put the lot here." I think we gotta figure out, there's a lot of space here, or there isn't a lot of space, and we may have a lot of uses. And we gotta prioritize that and figure out where things are gonna go before we start laying down pavement.
I think that's something that's been discussed, and I think Bernie actually brought it up again tonight, was a comprehensive plan, that's the idea.
No, it's a, it's a little bit different than a comprehensive plan.
I've worked on a few comprehensive plans, and the idea is to make some predictions and some ideas. And it sounds very along the lines of kind of what you're talking about, cause I, I think it is.
The comprehensive plan is just a good way to slow the process down, cause that's all it's gonna do.
I mean, I think, I mean, the results of comprehensive plans, from my experience with them, is they do exactly what you're talking about. They talk about what are the needs, what are they currently now, where do you predict they're gonna be in the future? And it, it's kind of what you, you just mentioned, but that's just an option.
You know, I, I, you know, I, I disagree, because, you know, you take the town of Shapley, they're putting a new building off, they're, they're doing their stuff, okay? They don't have a comprehensive plan, okay? We haven't used our comprehensive plan in how long? Has any, when was the last selectman actually looked at and was, "Okay, this is what we should do," because twenty, thirty years ago, someone thought that was a good idea? You look at a comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan says there's gonna be a second story in our school. No, there's gonna be town water and sewer, no.
Their living documents must be updated, and that's.
Honestly, but who's gonna update it?
It's, it's up to the.
Okay.
The select board.
We're, we're doing, we're doing the same thing right now, we're having the input from the public telling us what we should be doing. So it's just like when Bernard said something about the police station.
They're like a, a long-term plan, so I, I don't think it should be something that's easily dismissed.
Long-term plan's different than, the, the comprehensive plan.
Can I say something? A comprehensive plan, to me, is different than a long-term capital plan. What I'm talking about is a long-term capital plan that will lay out what the building space needs are for the town. A comprehensive plan looks more towards what kind of growth do we want in the town? How do we wanna affect that growth in the town? What kind of zoning might we look for in order to direct that growth in a particular way? And it would look at space, but it's pri- I think it's primarily looking at the growth and development of the town as opposed to, what I'm talking about is the development of town space. And infrastructure for roads.
It's gonna lead to the need of that town space.
Yeah.
I don't think they're separate, I don't think, I mean, I think we, we can incorporate them, we can start with that, but I do think it does lead into a longer discussion of a comprehensive plan. That's just my personal opinion. And I get where you folks stand on it, and I respect that.
I just want to reiterate that I actually said both. I don't know if anyone remembers that, but I said both. And, and I do agree with what Tom's saying. And I frankly, I see this as two, they're related decisions, but I think they're separate. Are we gonna tear the building down? There wasn't, it wasn't necessarily, are we gonna, that, if we tear that down, then we are going to construct something else. It's two separate decisions, and I think the separate, the second part of that decision relies on the factors that Tom is pointing out. I do wanna say that I had forgotten, um, just the other day, looking at the building in the context of what it does to the historic buildings. And, and I totally agree that it blocks out these buildings and that it does ruin that, can't find my word, but basically, the, the ambiance, the importance that this could be like a little historic village, and if there are additions, they could be constructed in a way to appear historic and so forth, and that would be a big improvement, so. Thanks.
That's all.
Thank you.
So I would just suggest that we kind of look at, the issue that we're talking about is tearing that building down, or whatever. And then, at that point, it seems like you would come in and just gravel grade to some sort of natural pitch, that whole area, so you had temporary overflow parking, because parking here is a disaster now anyway, so the fact that it would be, you know, just a gravel parking lot. And then you can deal with all your other issues in the future.
Agreed.
But, don't get so tied up on all those future things that you can't deal with this problem now.
I, I, I said tear it down.
Yeah.
Tear it down.
We don't have to pay.
Huh? No, we don't wanna pay, but we, until we figure out what we wanna do.
What's happening here is, you know, we're discussing it, we just don't wanna, you know, people just come up with ideas of one good reason why it could be gone. And, uh, I think at this point, we're just, we want, we want this, and it's been called an eyesore or whatever, but to me, it's more of an insurance issue, cause we've had so many issues with the insurance company, the mold and everything else.
That's kinda where it's headed.
It's just sitting here, doing nothing to us. It's, it's prohibiting us to work on the parking lot. So, until that, that's, that decision's made, we can't move on. So, um, so at some point, we'll make that decision, that's why we're here. Uh, any other comments?
Okay, I guess I'm gonna close down the public hearing at six forty-eight, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and, uh, I wanna go into our, our selectmen's meeting. I'm gonna start with the warrant bills, all signed up, guys?
Signed.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
I think emotionally approved the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
I'm with our approval minutes of the November fifteenth meeting.
Second in.
All in favor? Town administrator weekly update?
Um, just a few things for you this week. First, um, again, I know we did this before the holiday, but again, I wanna thank everybody that was involved in the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Thanksgiving dinner. We actually fed seventy-five people this year. It was a huge turnout, it was very successful, so whether you donated something, came and ate with us, or helped serve and clean up, we appreciate everybody. Um, special shout-out to Dave, who went above and beyond in his tasks and handled them like a champ. We'll leave it at that.
Good times.
Inside joke there, but.
No, it was nice seeing everybody there. Yeah, it was great, um, you know, we, how many people?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Nice.
Yeah, it was, it was quite an improvement last year, I mean, last year was great and all that.
Forty-eight last year.
Yeah, well, seventy-five's a lot more than forty-eight.
That's a big increase, yeah.
No, it was a good time, good time, yep.
Um, next is a notice that, um, the town clerk's office will need to close at noon time on December fifth. We have a motor vehicle fall training workshop, it's actually in Sanford, for the first time, I think, in the twenty years I've been here, so we are excited to travel just to Sanford for the workshop. It'll close at noon on the fifth. Uh, next is the conversation of Christmas. Uh, this year, it falls on a Monday, so certainly the transfer station will be closed on that Monday, will reopen on Wednesday. Town hall staff would like to have that Tuesday off, so I told them I would bring it to you for discussion.
What have we historically done?
It, it depends on how it falls, I mean, you know, usually they, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, they'll usually get two days, some, it just, I mean, every year is different, so we just kind of bring it up.
So it's officially one holiday, but have we made it two, depending on the calendar?
Yes.
I see.
Well, the only issue is if people are traveling out of state, wherever, whether or not getting back.
I mean, a lot of the same, you know, it's Christmas and just.
We have people that are also taking a week off, they've already asked for it, so.
The next that we're gonna get to.
So, so they're gonna already be slim pickings anyways. I have no issue with that myself, but, um, what do you guys think?
I don't see any problem.
Yeah.
Tom?
Okay.
Dave?
That's how hall will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-sixth. Um, regarding that same week, um, you know, it is the end of the year and we do have a policy that says staff can roll over one week's vacation. Other than that, depending on how many years you've been here, you have the possibility to buy some out, you'll see that in next week's payroll, um, but other than that, you lose it. So, we scrummage like we do every year, um, going around to employees, showing them what they have, what they can roll over, what they can cash out. The way it's looking now is that the code office will be closed that entire week after Christmas, unless it's emergency inspections that possibly our deputy.
I would think that would probably be the best week you could shut down.
I would think so, yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, people are, I mean, staff is taking vacations here and there, just, you know.
Well, we, we give them vacation days and we have to all take them. They're putting them ahead, you know, they're giving us notice on it, but, and have them both the same day, the same week, it is what it is.
Do we ever make exceptions to that policy?
Um, we do, if, if staff asks you to consider it, we, we certainly will, but we're already rolling over one week, so unless something's happened, you know, the encouragement is that staff take vacation.
Okay.
So you'll see that, um, posting that, that office will be closed the week of Christmas. Next is just to notify you that our new de- our new deputy town clerk tax collector has officially been certified for motor vehicles, so she can, she took her classes, um, first, second, and third classes and got certified, good news.
Extend our thanks and congratulations to her.
I will.
That helps the town.
Certainly does. Um, I reached out to the sheriff's department and let them know that we were looking for those four-hour blocks in December, so, um, he's working on some.
Thinking about it?
Yes. Good way of saying it.
Okay.
And the only other thing I wanted to talk about, which, um, is, I'm hoping with Tom's help as my municipal management liaison, that we can start working on a manual policy, manual check policy next time you come in on Wednesday.
Okay.
That's it.
Very good. Any update on the audit?
Yes. Last one, last one here. I actually got it, we reached out today and got an update, so bear with me. So, Jen, hello, Kim sent over your request on an update and, on the update of the audit. Since I've been working on it, I thought I would respond. I'm currently on schedule to get the town a draft to review by the end of next week at the latest.
Very nice.
Came in just today.
Who sent that?
Uh, that came from Kathy, who is the lead auditor, it's not the individual that did it, it's the lady above it, so it's in, um, final steps.
Very nice.
Okay, hold on a sec.
Sure.
Department head committee chair updates?
Any?
I was looking for you, Will, I didn't, you were just sitting over there, I noticed today.
Uh, Will Langley, road commissioner, uh, probably remember last year in budget time, we, uh, budgeted to have the lights and everything fixed down to the tractor shed down there, to the, the other little storage building. The electrician wrapped all that up today, so.
Was he able to pull the wire from the transformer all right?
Yeah, he pulled, they pulled that through, uh, they put a new, uh, um, shut-off outside, uh, we put, uh, he, he just brought up the code, there was just some stuff in there that wasn't brought up to code, so he brought that up to code and everything, so, I think they got a little bit more work left to do and then, uh, we should be in pretty good shape, so that, that's all done, so, that, that's all good.
Thanks, Will.
Good.
Any, any more, uh?
Did Robin start to get up?
Robin, were you getting up? Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we're gonna move on to liaison updates, Tom?
Okay, municipal has primarily been focused on the treasurer and, um, I think in particular, the, uh, there was a problem where the bank didn't process the. I think in particular, the, uh, there was a problem where the bank didn't process some ACH funds, which created a problem with the payroll, being delayed for one day. Uh, Jennifer and, uh, and Kelly, I think, did work to, to get that back and, and actually cut some manual checks for people that needed to be cut. Um, other than that, we've, uh, primarily been focusing on a review of the year-to-date budget actuals. And I believe that's been sent to the finance committee now through October?
Yes.
Through October? So they'll be getting those monthly.
Correct.
From now on, they'll automatically go to them. Uh, very simple format, and I think in a matter of ten minutes, you can predict, you can figure out whether or not we have any issues or not, and we do not at this stage. Warrant finances meeting is at the, uh, the fourth of December, so we'll, uh, be attending that meeting. APAT, I think, uh, we've been working with Mike, and there'll be a future agenda item, talking about some things that he's been working on, very good work. And cemetery has not met yet, have they?
Uh, they have not. They're just doing some grinding work, probably set a bill in there.
Very good. So that's it for me.
Uh, Ed?
Sure. Uh, nothing from the fire department side. Uh, I'm working with Robin on the, uh, layout for the new plan for the transfer station traffic.
I think we're supposed to meet with the engineer Friday, next Friday. Is that right?
David requested to meet with him, so it's scheduled for this Friday at three o'clock.
Oh, this Friday?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Not available.
Not available? What?
It's the first time I've heard about it.
Well, I thought, wait, so at last week's meeting, when he didn't, he didn't, you know, was, didn't see the plan that he originally asked him to move forward, the idea was that he was meet, he wanted to meet with them and the, um, rep regarding the actual plans that he wanted on that. It was discussed at the meeting, and he told me to schedule it.
Okay, I'm on vacation, so.
You're on vacation? I mean, you, you mind me doing it?
Well, I wanna be involved with the transfer station side, yeah.
So, I mean, there's no sense in meeting him, having him twice. So, I mean, it doesn't matter to me either way. But we gotta get the rec thing rolling, so.
Yeah, the transfer station's gonna take time, so.
I mean, I thought we hashed it out the other night.
Well, we did, but I mean, we didn't come up with anything concrete.
That's why he wanted, he wanted to go over his plan with him.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what am I doing?
Well, I gotta meet with him on, on the rec field. We gotta get that, that ball rolling.
We'll leave that one there. So tell him you'll only be discussing that one.
So, the transfer station, I mean, we don't wanna drag it on another week. I don't care. It's not my department, so, um, but, um, yeah, we'll just, I'll just deal with the rec.
Okay.
So.
So, um, yeah, so that's basically it. Last night, we did do a, uh, webinar on elected official. Not do's and don'ts, but just, I can't remember the exact name, title of the class, but.
Overall review.
Yeah, it was an overall review on rules, regulations for elected officials. I took it once before. Matter of fact, Bill Shields and Ted Kryzak and I went to, uh, went to benefit where we went and took it. But it was quite informative. There's some new things out there that will affect some of the ways we do things, so. Nothing earth-shattering, but just some interesting things. So, that's all I got.
Dan?
Um, I was able to help set up for the Thanksgiving and attended and helped serve as well. It was a great event. Thank you to all the volunteers, many who do not wanna be named for coming out and doing that. It was great to be a part of that. Um, I also took the training last night with, um, Ed. Um, I did reach out to the mayor grant committee after last week's, um, changing of, these ones just to let them know and keep them updated that I'm the liaison, and asked it to keep me updated on all meetings and events. And then today, I was able to meet along with Jen with the chair of the school board, as well as Mr. Ross, to talk about some of the budget timelines, which we'll talk about later on the agenda.
Okay, cool. Um, roads and road committee, uh, I did get a call from Mr. Ward Friday. I wanna apologize to him that I was trying to get, so we go down and inspect the, uh, project down here on Thirty-Fourth Street, but I ended up just going down after work and taking care of it. Um, but, like I said, I went down to Thirty-Fourth Street, checked out that project down there. And, um, I don't, the rec committee, I'm gonna, I'll meet with the engineer on Friday, so.
And the road committee, I'm not sure if I told you, rescheduled their meeting.
Till December eleventh?
December eleventh, yeah. Where they've got a, um, application for Article forty-three funds for, um, Andrew.
So they originally had a, um, meeting set up for the first, but after, um, uh, Mr. Ward said that he had to, um, step back, re, re, recuse himself, yes, and he was gonna let the co-chair take over. Unfortunately, the co-chair lives on the road to that, is doing it, so, um, you, to get a quorum, I mean, they would have to have everybody on the committee, 'cause we've lost, we lost Adam, so we'd have to have everybody as, so they couldn't get a quorum. So that's why they're gonna have to move their meet, meeting to, uh, to, uh.
Virginia?
You okay in there?
To, uh, to the eleventh, so, uh, so that's, that's all I've got for the roads. And the, uh, rec committee, like I said, we're meeting on Friday.
Yeah, and they are meeting, I believe, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, and I will try to be on that one there. I didn't go to, last, I don't do Fridays, I don't do weekends, so. Fridays and I gotta go out with my wife, and weekends is weekends. So, um, so I guess that's it. I'll go down to old business lawn care bids.
All right, I did a spreadsheet to break these off and break these down. Um, based on your reactions last week, it shouldn't be a big surprise. Um, the first one, the, uh, Spruce Property Maintenance Public Safety breaks down to two twenty-five, Seacoast one twenty. Spruce, as I've said this once, none of his prices include fertilizing, and he does not offer any bush hogging. All of Seacoast are going to include fertilizing, okay? Um, rec field, two twenty-five, two seventy-five versus one twenty, town hall, one thirty-five versus one twenty, mayor grant, seventy-five versus sixty, Lincoln School, sixty-five versus sixty, Peter Tower, sixty-five versus fifty. You note all of them once a week. You're looking at eight forty compared to five thirty, um, because it's Seacoast, includes fertilizer, it's including all of the, um.
I'm confused.
Why?
Because I thought, last week when you gave those prices, there was a lump sum, like a contract price, wasn't there?
Yeah, but you asked me to break it down per mow.
So we could compare.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, I understand that, but at the end of the day, what is the ending price?
Well, Seacoast, Seacoast is fifteen thousand nine sixty, and he does offer bush hogging at two hundred and fifty each, with all the fertilizing.
So that includes fertilizer?
That includes the fertilizer.
One, one application?
Correct. According to, the problem is, is that Spruce put per season, it doesn't say how many mows, that's, I mean, so we, with no fertilizing, forty-two thousand seven fifty.
Kinda makes sense.
Yearly with fertilizing, seventy-five thousand, Mr. Bid that.
With seventy-five thousand with fertilizer?
Seventy-five thousand with fertilizing, and he is off.
So that's thirty grand for fertilizing?
Um, yes, that's correct, thirty-three thousand. There is additional cost.
Is that everybody in town, or just, you know?
There's additional cost for the maintaining of the flower beds.
That's not funny, actually. Yeah. Sorry, Jennifer, you were saying?
There's additional cost for the flower beds on Spruce, Seacoast.
I think we're just gonna move on to trying to, uh, can you see, can you, can I see that, please?
We look at it together here.
Yeah, well, I, Brian's been doing our mowing up to the rec field.
Correct.
I know.
Good guy. He's, he treated us very well for the last, I don't know, how many years he been doing it?
That's Seacoast?
Yeah, Seacoast, Brian Oy. And, um, obviously, uh, there's a big discrepancy between seventy thousand and fifteen thousand dollars, so I'm, I'm not even gonna think about this.
My only question, we have that in the budget for that?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'll make a motion if you want.
Not this one.
No, but for the fifteen.
There you go.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
All right.
I will make a motion at this point. We go with Seacoast Property Maintenance, fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
And we can add the bush hogging for two fifty per mow as needed?
Yep.
Yes.
How many times a year does that need to be done?
Robin?
Once, once or twice.
Any bush hogging a year?
I've been doing it once a year.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
In the fall, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
It'll have to be done in the spring, but I didn't.
So maybe this year, he's gonna do it twice, because he didn't do it last year, right?
I did it last year.
But this year, I mean.
Right, I haven't done it this year.
Okay, so it's probably gonna have to be done in the spring and then in the fall, okay? Awesome.
Just wanna initial the bottom of that.
Yeah, I'll, I guess, yeah. Sorry about that. It's doing papers on me, Ed.
Keeping you on your toes.
Yeah. So, okay, we're down to new business, Maine Health Trust Letter.
Uh, last week, you guys agreed to add, um, dental and vision at a hundred percent employee cost. Maine Municipal is just asking for you to put that in writing, so I drafted a couple of paragraphs.
Are they coming up to do the open enrollment?
No, we do it all in-house.
You do it all in-house, okay.
Do we have to make a motion to sign this?
Yes.
We do? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize, um, the issuance of, uh, vision and dental, um, health insurance, or insurance, I should say, with Maine Municipal, effective January first, two thousand twenty-four.
Do I hear a second?
Second in.
All in favor? Okay.
Okay.
Pandemic policy.
So we have, um, an outdated pandemic policy, um, on the town's website and in place, um, based on the guidelines of the CDC and other things that have changed since COVID-nineteen. I'm asking that you consider, uh, temporarily dissolving it, until we can work together on updated draft. Because the way the policy sits now, um, it's just not.
It exceeds state guidelines?
It definitely exceeds state guidelines.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you, I mean, make copies, I know you guys have probably seen it, but those are the, it's primarily the back, it's the exposure. Originally, the exposure, you were automatically out of work whether you were sick or not, for five days.
So the motion is to, um.
Uh, temporarily dissolve it.
Temporarily suspend
Yes.
the, um, existing COVID policy. Town COVID policy.
Here, a second.
Second in.
All in favor?
Do you need us to sign something? Okay.
I think probably what we're, oh, seeing that, you're hearing about a pop-up here and there.
Yeah.
Maybe something that we're just keeping an eye on, and then kinda make that adjustment as needed.
Yeah, case by case.
Yeah, uh, because the CDC guidelines are gonna change.
Right.
And we don't wanna put something in place that haven't changed a week later, so.
So the, I guess my question is, framing of the word, if we're, it sounds like we're not gonna put any policy in place, so is it accurate to say we're temporarily suspending, or we're just gonna get rid of it?
Well, we kinda have to get rid of that, because that exceeds what the guidelines, what the CDC's telling us. We, that was pretty extravagant.
I don't think we decided whether we would issue a new policy.
Well, so that's, okay, so that's why I was.
At least I, that was my understanding.
Temporarily suspend implies that we're gonna put a new one in place, so that's, that's, I'm just worried about that word.
Well, that's why I said, with, you know, with this, uh, COVID coming back, I guess, a little bit here and there, whatever, whatever's going on with that, I think we, we oughta really go with the flow and, and evolve with it, instead of making a policy now. That's why dissolving, because this one here, we've got it, so someone thinks they're exposed, they're out for two weeks, and we're paying, and this and that, and it's way above what CDC's requiring now.
I understand that part. I was just saying, I don't know, I don't know if we're even mad at just saying, just dissolving instead of temporarily suspending, just because there, the nuances in that language could imply something.
Okay. Uh, town meeting timeline.
So, um, I know last week, or two weeks ago, we talked about trying to figure out timeline. I went to the school board meeting, and they had made a, a proposal, um, about having their budgeting, um, their meeting on March nineteenth. And we had talked to them about trying to do like a joint combining the town meeting with the school budget, kinda do it in one night, get everything, um, done. So I, um, generously was able to set up a meeting between her and myself, Judy Shane, the chair of the school board, as well as Mr. Ross today, to be able to kinda talk about the timeline and try to come up with a compromise. Um, we addressed some of their concerns. Um, some of their concerns was, um, it being on a Saturday, not many parents, um, in the past have been able to make a Saturday meeting, they vocalized, you know, that the schedule are busy, and they also had concerns around school vacation, having it so close, if you do it like the week before, a lot of times students, families get checked out ready, and then coming back, it's hard to get back into it. So we kind of, Jen and I went and talked about those, all those things, and we came up with a potential idea of having a joint meeting with the, um, school and the town on, um, it would be April eleventh, um, Thursday night, eleven, um, at five P.M. And that's kinda where we, we said we'd come back and bring that to the select board, and just kinda see where we stand on that.
How many, uh, how many, um, items will they be approving?
Um, they predicted, because in the past they've been able to do it, because of COVID, able to do it by ballot this year, they have to go back to having the articles. And I believe, um, Judy had said that they expect, as of now, between fifteen to nineteen art, separate articles for the school itself.
So the thought of getting through, um, fifteen or so articles for the school and another fifty, if we're, how many did we have last year? Forty-something, fifty? I, I think it was around fifty. So we're talking about sixty-five articles on a, on a weeknight?
Weeknight.
I, I don't know how you do that.
That doesn't happen.
I, I, I mean, uh, they're probably not gonna be able to get started until six, at the earliest, 'cause people don't get out of work. Many, some are four, but many are five. They're gonna wanna go home, they're gonna wanna grab, somebody's gonna wanna grab something to eat.
Yeah, that's a cross concern I had.
Yeah, so it's like, it's like six o'clock, um, you know, you're gonna be into the wee hours, um, trying to get through that. I don't think that makes a lot of sense.
Some of them you'll get through in a minute or two. A lot of them is gonna be five, eight, ten minutes.
The money issues are gonna, are gonna dominate the discussion.
Spread it out.
I think it's great to consolidate them, and, um, of course, that means the town would have to get its budget done, uh, sometime in April. And based on the discussion we had last with Mark Roy when he was in here, I think we're reasonably confident we can get through a budget and get it done, get it through Warrant Finance Committee, and have that ready sometime in April for, for a vote. So the school can make that as well. I guess the question is, the date, or the, the weekday is first. Is this gonna be done at night during the week, or is this gonna be a Saturday? And I think that's the principal issue.
You'd be, you'd be doing two to three nights if you're trying to do it at night?
If you wanna town meet two nights, that just doesn't make any sense.
No, no.
I mean, if you tried doing it one night, I, I just.
Doesn't work.
I, I think you'll lose so many people.
You can't do a Thursday night. No, we, here we are, we can't get people on Saturdays.
Yeah.
Okay? Now you're gonna, you're gonna ask people to go on a Thursday night coming home from work. People get out of work at five. You're gonna get them there. They got kids, okay, 'cause obviously the schools, you know, people from the school are gonna go vote. That was the whole idea, is to try to pull some of the kids, the people from the school to our town meeting, 'cause we're gonna enhance town meeting. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna go the opposite direction, because people are getting out of work, they gotta, they gotta feed their kids, this and that, then, yeah, we gotta have daycare. Well, we're not gonna, people aren't gonna have their kids in until nine o'clock at night. Those kids are supposed to be eventually go to school, so.
I mean, it's, it's really difficult, you know, for everybody watching, it's, it's very difficult for the board to make this decision, because we're hearing it from all ends. I mean, we're hearing that, you know, if you have to have an open town meeting, which, which for full disclosure, the school board has now, now knows after COVID, they have to have us, an open town meeting. So going back to the ballot box is not an option per legal, so that's off the table. So if they have to have an open town meeting, the town has to have an open town meeting, why would you not combine them to save financial money? That's what the board is hearing from people on the outside. You know, you've got, you're paying for one moderator, one posting, one town meeting. So combine them, and so then the flip side is, okay, well, what day of the week do we do it on? I mean, parents wanna do things Saturday mornings. You know, we understand the Thursday piece, but there's been talk about do one Thursday, one Saturday. That seems silly. There, you know, no matter which way you do this, we're never gonna make everybody happy. It, it's, you know, it's, it's a very difficult decision, but we've got to pick one to be able to move forward.
I think whatever the decision, I think we just also, like, I just wanna recognize that we've had a lot of people talk about Saturdays, and I, I know that you think there's the, the idea of bringing people from the school into a Saturday. We might also just risk losing those people who would come and vote on the school budget on a school night, because they have the time. And then saying, well, now we can't even vote in the school budget. So whatever the decision is, I just do wanna recognize that we are trying to think very consciously about all these options.
Fine, absolutely.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
Can I make a suggestion that, that why don't we, um, authorize starting the budget process immediately for the town? Let's make sure we can get that budget ready to be voted on in April. Um, that we continue to have discussions with the school board about this dilemma, and, because this is something I think we need to work through with them.
Right, there's no wrong answer. I mean, we don't want it, we don't want it splitting the town, we, you know.
I would like to set a, a target month to have, not a date, a target month, to have this enacted, uh, uh. I, I would like to set a, a target month to have, not a date, a target month, to have this enacted, uh, uh, in April. So that means we get the budget done, it allows that.
Robin, can you have her?
We get the budget for the town done in April, the school's obviously capable of doing its budget, we have a discussion with, um, the school board somehow, and I'm not quite sure how to do that, but we should talk to the school board, um, I, and we go from there, we'll do, we'll do the best thing we can. Um, personally, I like the idea of having it together, um, while there's a lot of, you know, items that get voted on, this is when all the money gets voted on, all the budget, and to me, as a citizen, um, I think it makes a lot of sense for people to know what they're voting on in one setting, and not have it broken up in any way. Um, and I think that's just good transparency and good governance, but that's my opinion anyway, so, so I think we oughta, let's, let's set April as a time, a target date to get this done, let's talk to the school board, and let's try to get this decision made as quickly as possible.
I think that's.
How's that sound, everyone?
I think that's a fine idea, I do just wanna uplift the, I, the fact that there were concerns about it being so close to April vacation, so I do hope that we recognize that we, you know, if we're gonna do April with.
April vacation's when?
Um, the fifteenth, the week of the fifteenth, so.
And they really didn't wanna go into it the weekend before or after, because people use that time to utilize long vacations.
I think people first, as, beginning, if we set our, if right now theoretically, hypothetically, or whatever, we say, okay, April first, we'll use April first as a good number to roll by, or April sixth, or, on a Saturday, right? Cause I, we're not gonna roll through on a Thursday night sixty articles, that's not gonna happen.
And having we know we can't consolidate the school, and you can only consolidate so many of the towns without the voters getting upset, I mean, you know.
Okay, well, I'd do June.
Break it into two days, and then lock together.
I like June.
David's back in June.
Well, I don't know, I think.
Father's Day weekend.
Any date has an issue, so.
But I think that's, that's a good one, you're not gonna have too many, like, events going on, but I, I just wanna put that out there, cause that was some of them that was, I heard at the school board and talking to.
Well, we're gonna talk to the school board, and we'll listen to those concerns, and we'll, I'm sure we'll do the best thing we can.
So what we can do right now is just say, okay, we're gonna use the April first deadline, get all our budgets ready for that point, and then if it extends on, we're safe, right?
Yeah, that's not, that's not anybody's, we're gonna use that to count backwards, right? The department has to figure out.
That's what I mean, we're basing our budget right on that date, and if it goes on from there, we have wiggle room.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't want budgets coming April first, we'd be behind.
No, 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 they're, they're gonna have to be done in March, really.
I'll send it to January.
Oh, well, God love you.
Two, 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 couple of weeks, I mean, the quicker we can turn it over.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, uh, two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four salt bids.
Uh, so we're going to respectfully ask that we table that, I've been quite ready for tonight, so it'll be on next week's agenda.
When do we normally do those, usually before, that's right?
William?
Yeah, usually, but I, I have so much now, man, I, I don't really need any right now.
And she just.
Usually we do it like this time.
I know, but remember last year, that little quagmire we gotta do?
Isn't there a state contract that we wanna be considering here as well?
There is a state cog, but in the past, the boards have required that state cog bid, and there's two other companies that offer it, so.
Well, last year what happened was, we didn't jump in on the cog.
Right, but we did, we got, we've, we have participated.
Yeah, they, they did us a favor.
We've gotten, we've gotten the numbers.
We still use grain of state, didn't we?
No, this year, we provided the numbers.
Okay, we did, yes, yes, yeah, cause last year, we, remember, we didn't give the numbers, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't allow us in, and.
But Will has done all that this year.
Okay, good, perfect, thank you.
So there's.
So you still want something to compare it to, or you're happy taking the state cog bid?
No, 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 we, we need a price out of grain of state like we always do, yeah.
And anyone else, it would be appropriate bidder.
That's what we're working on.
Yeah.
There's another, there's another outfit you can get it from too now, DPW. You know Billy Fathergill that worked for Alki? You know DPW, the name of the company's DPW?
Yeah.
In Sanbornville.
Okay.
You know Billy Fathergill that worked for Alki?
Yeah.
He's got his own company now.
Yeah.
Or something thereof, it may be one worth sending a bid to, I don't know what their prices are or anything about it, but I just see easy advertising.
Give, put them on the list.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, usually, usually we'll have two on the list, cause you, you got Morton and you got Granite.
Right, exactly, yeah, so, it's just something to look into.
Okay.
I just happened to see a post for it, so.
Yeah, awesome.
I have no connection with it whatsoever, just throwing it out there.
Well, if you did, couldn't you give us a better deal?
Probably not.
Okay. Okay, um, we got an executive session, uh, we're not gonna be making any, yeah, I'm just, just, we won't be making any decisions, so, yeah, let's do a public comment. Any public comment? None, okay, I guess we're gonna go to, I need a motion?
Make a motion, we go into executive session four oh five six E Legal Consult.
Okay. All in favor?
I don't know what time it is, Mel.
It is seven twenty.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I know that we come on executive session four oh five six E Legal Consult at seven forty-seven.
Okay, no decisions. Oh, all in favor? There was no decisions made, um, I guess, uh, do I hear a, a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Good night, everybody.
Good night.